I'm going to sneak in real quick, like very fast, one item CDA meeting. Call the roll call. First ward?
Here.
Second?
Here.
Third?
Here.
Fourth?
Here.
Fifth? Six?
Here.
Mayor. I'm going to waive my first resolution, which was just to accept the last minute. I can do that at my next meeting. There was a loan committee meeting to approve a submission by Mama Gina's Restaurant for a business expansion. They have been operational in the Pyramid Mall since November of eighty-nine and have recently purchased the old bike clinic building and are renovating the property. It looks to be a approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar-plus project. Fulton Savings Bank is participating, we're participating, and there's owner equity involved. Their plans include an expansion of their current menu, and they'll serve beer and wine. They plan an ice cream parlor setting with a game room and a party room. There'll be a fast food side, and it's going to be, they tell me, much like a Sabaro kind of an operation, if any of you have ever been in the big malls, to see the Sabaro franchise. They are going to hire sixteen full-time employees and six to seven part-time. And Bonnie and Severino will be considered full-time employees. The resolution reads, "Whereas the CDA loan committee has reviewed a loan request submitted by Sal and Bonnie Marini for purchase of equipment associated with the acquisition and renovation of the former bike clinic property on Second Street to be known as Mama Gina's Restaurant, now therefore be it resolved, a loan in the amount of fifty-thousand dollars be hereby approved for purchase of equipment and startup cost as outlined in their loan application, for a term of seven years, interest at seven percent for year one, increasing to eight percent for the remaining six-year loan period, collateral to include a UCC-1 filing on new equipment purchases, personal guarantees by principals, and second mortgage on personal residence."
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's it. Can I have a resolution to adjourn?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Might I just give you very quickly, I have a request that doesn't really come to me. It's from the Wayne Pharmacy Company, and they're asking, it's something that should be considered by the council. They are asking to have the trees removed from the front of their store because they cover up the store facade and they're causing decay of the building. This is something that the city is responsible for downtown, and I feel that you ought to give it considerable consideration before you do anything about cutting trees down.
Okay, we will.
Pay for the cleanup.
Thank you, girl.
Okay, somebody threw some hair at him.
Thank you. Call the roll?
First ward?
Here.
Second ward?
Here.
Third ward?
Here.
Fourth ward?
Here.
Fifth ward? Sixth ward?
Here. First item.
Whereas Helen M. Brainard passed from this life on September second, nineteen ninety-two, at A.L.E. Memorial Hospital in Fulton, and whereas Helen M. Brainard was a native of Fulton who retired in nineteen ninety-two after serving as a clerk in the Fulton Water Department for over fifteen years, and whereas she was former president of the Fulton Chapter of the American Business Women's Association, and whereas she is survived by a brother, Robert C. Burley of Fulton, two nieces, a nephew, and several grandnieces and grandnephews, and whereas the mayor, members of the common council, and all of her friends, fellow workers, neighbors, and acquaintances will miss this kind and gentle woman who both personally and professionally touched so many lives, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of this common council share this great sense of loss with the family and friends of the late Helen M. Brainard, and do with deepest regret, take official notice of the loss of Helen M. Brainard, and be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of September fifteenth, nineteen ninety-two, and a copy of it be transmitted to the immediate family of the late Helen M. Brainard.
Have a motion.
I'll move it.
Second. Call the roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number two.
Whereas at a meeting of this common council held on September first, nineteen ninety-two, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on September fifteenth, nineteen ninety-two, at seven-thirty P.M. DST, in the common council chambers of the municipal building, Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed local law number two of nineteen ninety-two, which would amend chapter seventy-eight of the Fulton City Code entitled Fire Prevention and Building Construction. Said hearing is now declared open.
May I make a comment? We're going to listen to the public tonight, and then we'll vote on it at the next regular meeting. We discussed it in the back room, and we felt that that was the best way to go with the input that we might get tonight. Maybe there was something that we might have overlooked, so, you know, I guess anybody that wants to make a comment on it can do it now.
Steve London is our billing inspector. Do you want to say anything before we start, or?
Yeah, briefly, what this amendment will do is replace what I consider a very, what I consider a very weak building code with a code that has more enforcement and administrative capabilities. One of the problems we have right now in code enforcement is that it's easy to find problems, and it's not always easy to solve those problems. Hopefully, what this will do is help us to solve the major problems in this town.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Steve, could you elaborate and tell the public what kind of major problems we have? What kind of problems are you talking about that it's going to adjust or address?
Well, they vary wildly, from building problems all the way to housing problems. Some of the housing in this town is so substandard that it isn't the kind of housing that most people would want to live in. There's houses that are complete with structural deficiencies and cockroaches, plumbing that's deficient, and it's very hard to, these are the worst conditions, some of them are really bad. And the problem that we have here is that the landlords that own these sometimes don't respond to the complaints. And with the way the law is written right now, we have a hard time forcing the worst of the landlords to comply. And I'd like to note that that's not a large majority of landlords.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Danny?
Well?
You want to come down and use the mic? Can you state your name, please?
Daniel Ryan. Is this new code going to involve hiring new personnel to enforce it, or anything of that matter? More money the city might have to spend?
That would be up to the common council. It's kind of a new area we're getting into right now, and I don't exactly know what we're going to run into.
Right now, all we're looking to do is establish the code enforcement populace in a director. No, I'm trying to get, the mayor will appoint a director, it's going to be Steve's and Steve's taking code enforcement classes, but right now it won't involve any new personnel. Anybody else? Yes.
Alice Saboda. I'd like to know, will it help, if you can't help make landlords that are out of town do anything now, will it help you to be able to do it after you make this law? Because there's a house across the street from us that's had two windows missing for the last six months, and with the rain we've had, I'm sure that house has got to be flooded. I mean, there's five children in that house, and if the landlord hasn't done anything yet, why is he going to do it when they have a code?
One of the problems is that nobody in the building department has the right to issue appearance tickets. We have to go through what you call an accusatory process, which is a very long and drawn-out process, and it's, hopefully, with this appearance ticket, you can force these people to comply on a more timely basis than what they are now.
Well, when they're out of town, like this guy lives in Watertown, and the place was a mess when they finally got him to fix the porch that was caving in, and they finally got him to do that, but, like a personal thing, like a window, and these two windows have been missing since that family moved in there, and boy, we've had a lot of rain. I'd hate to think what those floors look like, for first thing.
We've got houses here that-
And all those upper floors will be caving in on the bottom floor.
We've got houses that are on the verge of collapse, that we have-
Well, this is what will happen, and this is a pretty good house that was once a big tax-collecting house, and I don't know what they're getting now. I think they should start taxing these landlords to allow these houses to get this bad, instead of raising our taxes that take care of our property.
Fran Foley. What type of enforcement authority is this going to give you, other than you're talking about the appearance something? Are you going to be able to solve these things, or is it going to be something that's going to drag on in appearances or in courts? I mean, is it going to really give you full authority to do something quickly?
I think it will.
I mean, and-
I'm pretty confident-
How specific? What else is there going to be besides the?
Well, it lays out, one of the things that we're not doing right now is we're not complying with state mandates. There are state mandates to inspect multiple dwellings on a time that's consistent with local conditions. We don't do that right now. We're in violation of state law by not inspecting these buildings. If you inspect them on a periodic basis, you can catch these things before they get to the point where the building's ready to collapse.
I hope so.
That's one of the major, one of the major changes in this new code.
It sounds like it's going to take a lot of people to carry out these inspections. And I should think you'd have to know how much it's going to cost the taxpayers before you make a decision like this. Got any idea how much it'll cost?
I don't at this point.
Well, one of the things we're considering is charging for these inspections. Most cities charge for these, and they are mandated, isn't it?
I'm afraid of that.
Right. But it's not like we have an option by not inspecting multiple dwellings. I think that's what you're talking about. The fire department already inspects commercial buildings. That's also required by law. They don't do that, they do that for fire safety, but they also do it because it's a requirement. It's also required by law to inspect multiple dwellings periodically. And I think if you've charged some kind of a fee, ten dollars a year, twenty dollars a year, that would amount to a quarter, a quarter a week for a rental unit. I don't think it would be an exorbitant cost to the landlord.
But it looks, according to the proposed code, like there's permits, certificates, inspections, I mean, an unending list of things you could be charged for.
No, it's not quite, yeah, it's not that, it's not what you would call a bureaucratic nightmare, that's what, kind of what you're saying. In Oswego- Yeah, in Oswego, what they do is they just basically go in and inspect, and then they issue a rental permit based on that inspection, if they pass.
What percentage of dwellers in Oswego have actually been inspected, do you know?
About, they're about eighty percent complete. They've got one person doing them.
Joe?
How often are you going to inspect?
Uh, once every two years, right now.
Once every two years? God, you're going to the landlord? You're going with the landlord?
Right.
What constitutes fall of loan? Anything over a single family?
Well, the way this code reads, it's all rental units, so it would be single, two families, anything is rented.
Now, is there something in the code now that says exactly what the charge is going to be, for you to come in and inspect?
No.
When will that be stipulated? Who will decide how much you're going to charge?
The council would have to decide that.
That would be a different resolution, the charge?
Is that the charge we were talking about earlier, that you mentioned, and I said I had seen?
Originally, we had the charge included in this amendment, but we felt that this wasn't the place to put it. It should be in the fee schedule.
Okay, so that would be a separate resolution-
And that was fifty dollars.
-to add to the fee schedule.
No, that was-
How much?
Fifty dollars.
Per unit?
Right.
Per rental unit.
And after each change of occupancy according to the code they read?
Every change of occupancy?
No, the code says every, every two years, you go in and inspect the property, and you have to renew your rental permit.
You can charge fifty dollars per, don't you think it's getting a tad, or not, that you got-
We took it out, Ron, we took it out.
Good, because I don't want to pay anyone. I think that's a good, brutal approach, but, you know, taxidermy, I think, is very important. At least, you've got to be another important tool for this. You gotta, you gotta be able to maybe find, they're not out of the code, give them what they need, they don't, they don't fix it, they find it.
Yeah, but that's in here also.
Yeah.
If you look at our city, that's where the money will come from. If someone doesn't fix it up, there's a fine. Well, that's exactly why we took it out, because that, there's no monies at all attached to what we're talking about now. Now, we're just talking about inspecting them.
Twenty dollars now, next year, it might be thirty, go find another one, make it fifty.
If there's enough of a public outcry on that charge, then I don't know what they would do, but at least you would be able to go in and inspect it. Right now, we can't do that.
There's a fight, I'm not sure what you're saying, there's a fight with which appearance ticket, right? If you don't reply?
That'd be up to a judge, wouldn't it?
That would be up to a judge.
Steve? That'd be up to the judge to levy a fine. That's up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
That would just initiate the legal proceedings. The way I read this, and Steve, tell me if I'm wrong, it says that if there's a violation, you have like thirty days to fix the violation. If you don't, when Steve goes back after thirty days, if you have not corrected the violation, then the city can take you to court. Well, you have thirty, thirty days is what you have with original notice, and then you have another thirty days with an order to remedy, and then after that, so you really have up to sixty days to comply with.
As the extent of the violation, I mean, if this is a matter of maybe piping or plumbing is one thing, but if you've got a structural problem, I mean, thirty days may not be, I don't know if you could renovate a building straight up against thirty days?
That's right. There's a lot of buildings in the city that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be running.
Maybe you could go extension.
Are you inspecting property that's been reported to you, or are you going to inspect all the houses, or just something that looked like they needed, or what? Are you going to go about inspecting?
It's all rental property.
Sal?
Yes, Salvatore Alonso. Question, you say right now, the process is that you can't issue an appearance ticket, however, an accusatory instrument can be issued, is that correct?
Right.
So, you're basically like a police officer. You go to the city attorney and indicate that there is a residence in the city of Fulton, please draft an accusatory instrument, is that right? City attorney drafts the accusatory instrument, just like a regular accusatory instrument in a criminal matter, and the accusatory instrument is served upon the landlord. He's got, he's got his rights of due process, he or she. They go to court before Judge Sumner, plead innocent, and they can have their trial, be found guilty, or be found innocent. That's basically the procedure right now.
Right.
But you want it so that you can issue an appearance ticket, act like the police officer, so that you can issue this accusatory instrument?
Correct.
And that's how the process would work.
Right.
What's wrong with the process now?
Well, my experience, and I don't know anything about the legalities of all this, but my experience with accusatories is that it takes, it adds a tremendous amount of time to-
It's called, I have, I'm not sure if I'm against it, but it's called due process. Your right of due process, your right to a trial, your right to confront your accuser, that's what, that's what it's basically called, all right? You can issue the appearance ticket, you can't issue it right now, but you can have your city attorney issue the accusatory instrument. And the thing is, if the landlord doesn't act, my understanding of the law is if he doesn't act, you take a judgment, is that right? Take a judgment, you're fining he or she on a daily basis.
Right, and then finally, the accusatory instrument initiates the action.
Correct.
Therefore, authorizing the judge to issue a criminal summons demanding that this person come to court. That gets the ball rolling.
And if the matter's not taken care of, the landlord just doesn't care, it's not fixed.
The judge can theoretically issue an arrest warrant.
But let's say, let's say the-
Failure to appear after the issuance of an appearance ticket.
All right, well, let's say the problem isn't taken care of, all right? You can fine that person on a daily basis, isn't that right? And then, after the fines amount to so many dollars per day, per week, per month, until the point where you have a fifty-thousand-dollar house, which is worth, it's worth fifty thousand, now that, now you have, you can take a judgment in the amount of, let's say, forty or fifty thousand. I mean, that just happened in Hannibal.
If, if the person-
And the town took the property.
Well, if the, if the person is found guilty.
Of course. That would be your job, though.
You've got to find the person guilty of the charge.
Which is, could be a simple process, I mean, bringing the person before the judge.
Steve would be probably the main witness, and he would testify.
I'm just wondering whether or not the appearance ticket, this change, is necessary, when he can come to you, make the complaint, you draft the accusatory instrument, serve it on the landlord, landlord doesn't fix, there's a fine on a daily rate, and then if the guy doesn't pay, if it's not fixed, you take the property. It's pretty simple. You execute on the judge.
That's what we're doing, except giving him a little expediency and the authority to issue an appearance ticket, which just makes the process faster. And I think that's what the people are concerned about, is the slow movement, and it's going to speed up a little bit. He can say, he can walk in and accuse someone, make an allegation, and at the same time, issue an appearance ticket for them to be in court three days later, or a week later.
Same thing can be-
That gets the process moving, instead of going through the bureaucratic-
Same thing is done, if the police department knows of a disorderly conduct or misdemeanor, or someone breaking, entering, burglary third, they're going to issue an accusatory instrument, they're going to arrest that person in ten minutes. The accusatory instrument is signed sometimes by the police officers, or a person having knowledge, and that person can be arrested immediately, not in three days.
Well, we're not going to arrest people. We're going to issue an appearance ticket.
But an appearance ticket will direct a person to come here to this court.
A summons to appear.
True. But then that person can enter there, it's the same thing with an accusatory instrument. They can say, "Not guilty, your honor, I need time to go hire an attorney."
They're not guilty until the city proves-
And basically, basically, if it's a, if it's criminal in nature, quasi-criminal, whatever.
Quasi.
Quasi-criminal, you're still going to be entitled to the same days to, you're going to be entitled to adjournments, motions. I want the people to understand this, you're entitled to your adjournments, you're entitled to your motions to dismiss, you're entitled to motions for, demands for discovery?
Yeah.
Demand for bill of particulars?
Yeah.
You're entitled to maybe a jury trial? It could still take a year now?
Non-jury trial.
All right, non-jury, but you're still entitled to your non-jury trial, and it could be-
You don't?
How many days before you get to try?
Well, you know you never waived your due process rights, and with a violation, you, I'm required to comply with the applicable-
I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be difficult, but don't say that with, by the issuance of the appearance ticket, it's going to be done real quick, and you're just going to slash due process rights. You're not going to do that. With the appearance ticket, it's going to be easier for the inspector to simply issue it. He's going to be the police officer.
I think Stephen's argument meant was that- I think Stephen's what I meant was that, uh, he'll be able to speed up the, the, the process, the governmental process of getting it into courtroom, and naturally, it makes the purpose...
Okay.
That's, that's part of the process.
Let's narrow it. The purpose is to speed up the governmental process, but you're not gonna speed up the court process. It's just not gonna happen. Not when you're having court one day a week on Thursday. It's not gonna happen.
We don't, we wanna protect those people who are accused just as much as anybody else, and we're not gonna, we, we wanna...
I agree. There's problems, I live in the city of Fulton, there's problems in this town, you know? There's, a lot of the housing is dilapidated and causing young people, young people, newlywed people that should be living here in the city of Fulton, to move elsewhere. And that's bad for the city of Fulton. When you only have young people, when you have young people saying, "Well, maybe we oughta live in Liverpool, or Clay, or Cicero, 'cause that's where new housing is," and that takes away from, you know, you're having professionals move out of town instead of staying here in old dilapidated houses. I live in a hundred-year-old home, and I had ma, I had to make major renovations. There is a problem here. But I, I just wanna say, the, I, I'm not sure if you're gonna speed things along. You're just gonna speed things administratively by making this...
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sal.
Thank you.
Ron?
They can, uh, try to talk another one about where the, uh, the vote enforcement officer seems unhealthy for people to live there, he can revoke the so-called title from that immediately until petitions are deemed livable again, according to the code. They don't need an appearance ticket.
I think basically, you can do that now, right, Steve?
What's that now? Not, not allow?
Yeah, that's what they, like, fix the law. You did that over time, like, you...
No, we have, we have no rights whatsoever to condemn, and even vacating a house is difficult, because you have to have, you have to provide someplace for those people to go. In Syracuse, they do it once in a while, but they'll have units, motel units or hotels set aside where they can take the people they're vacating to. You can't just take people out in the street. Well, the, right, 'cause that was, uh, that, that place was empty. Mm-hmm. It, it, no. Well, I suppose you could, if you had really serious conditions there, but you'd have to... Yeah.
Very good. I have a problem with, um, it says in the code, if a tenant moves out, you gotta get a new permit. If somebody move there, live there for a month and they move out, you gotta read another permit every time that happens?
Well, that's, that's what's re, uh, recommended by the Title Nineteen of the state law that, that I've used for a guideline. It's not recommended, it's required, actually. But any time there's, the two years is up, or any time there's a change in tenancy, that's something that you could probably, you could probably work with. The whole purpose of this isn't to harass landlords or to drag them off to court, but it's tried, it's trying to gain some kind of reasonable compliance that we're just not gaining now. There's something wrong right now. You've got houses that exist out there that shouldn't, and I'm not sure exactly what the problem is, but one of the problems is definitely in, in the enforcement capabilities of the existing code, and the fact that we're not complying with state mandates to inspect multiple dwellings and rental units.
Is there anything gonna be involved, private citizens? I mean, I could have a rental unit, keep it up in tip-top shape, and the guy next door could live there and have it falling down, or anything for him to get to know.
I'm not, I'm not sure I know what you mean.
Well, it says all rental units. If I, if I own a rental unit, my place is tip-top, the guy next door is in a rental unit, he lives there, and his house is falling down, nothing can happen to him.
Well, th, this, you can't have one code that's gonna deal with every single situation you can possibly imagine. I don't, I'm not sure.
Why, you just put in private citizens, bring them on the rent.
Well, 'cause the, the protection... Yeah, we do have an unsafe structure ordinance coming up for the ru, for the buildings that are, that, that need to be taken down. And there are code requirements for, uh, single-family dwellings that are owned by those people. They have to comply with certain laws, just like everybody else. But it's, it's very difficult to get into a private residency to inspect without the permission. It's probably one of the most protected pieces of property that there is, is a private, private property.
Privately-owned, single-family homes do fall under a set of codes, housing codes and...
They, they do, but it'd be hard pressed to come up with any kind of a law that would ever allow you inside of a private residence. You'd be in a direct violation of the Fourth Amendment rights.
I'm not talking about going in and inspecting, but if somebody has a complaint.
Oh, sure, on a boundary.
About a house, mainly, you know, it's gonna be, uh, the exterior of the house, the garbage laying around, things like that.
Right.
Uh, even single-family privately-owned homes are subject to a set of codes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anne?
Um, I'm Anne Mirabito Snyder, and I'm president of the Chamber of Commerce. The chamber strongly endorses this legislation. What we're talking about is administering and enforcing the existing building code, and this is something that needs to be done. What we need to keep in mind is that rental housing is a business. It's like a lot of other businesses. Every other business in this community is subject to enforcement. If you own a supermarket, if you own a drugstore, if you own a restaurant, your business is subject to being inspected by health inspectors, by fire inspector, by code inspectors. What we're talking about is providing the same administration and the same enforcement for rental housing as is true for every other business, and I think that's the, um, um, a key point that we need to keep in mind during the discussion. There's no reason that rental housing should be exempt from laws that apply to every other business. Um, I think the other thing that's important is that, as far as the cost issue goes, generally, the chamber strongly opposes all new taxes. In this case, we believe that the, um, fees that, that, um, are being discussed are reasonable and that they are a reasonable cost of doing business, and so, um, we recommend and endorse the legislation even with the fees, uh, attached to it. Thank you.
To Anne. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah.
Ronnie?
Jim.
You know, HUD inspects, you have a tenant, uh, HUD assistance, they inspect every year at the renewal of lease. So, there's certain ones that you probably would not have wasted your time with if you were in the HUD program, 'cause they are very high cost. Well, then they're going to pay for the same buildings that your people go into.
Let me tell you what HUD inspection is. It's minimum housing quality standards. Minimum housing quality standards. You have a light fixture in the room that operates, you have a toilet that flushes, you have a stove and refrigerator that works, you have railings up and down your stairways, it's minimum. Let me tell you, we put some people into some pretty sad-looking places here, because they pass minimum housing quality standards. You cannot equate HUD standards with a building. If you have a strong building code, that makes my job that much easier, because my people are gonna live in much nicer dwellers.
Okay, in reference to the code being, the whole reason why it's on the agenda is probably not because of the people that are out here in the audience, because of the people that call me. And I log all my calls, and I have a ten-thirty meeting so far, and I have ninety-two complaints just in my ward against housing. And because of the housing and the, um, condition of the rental units, it gives little to no incentive to the private, uh, property owner to do anything with their property. I talked to a group la, uh, two nights ago in my ward, and they said, you know, they get, get out every morning, look across the street, and they think they wanna paint their house, they wanna side it, but why should they? When they have to look at the trash that's next to them, and they have to look at the houses that are falling apart. They wanna take pride in their property, but like Mr. Lanza says, where is the incentive? So, the people that want it are not here. They call us, and I think the other aldermen have also got those calls. Ninety-two calls. That's why it's on there.
Also, it, excuse me, it's not, not only that, but it's not necessarily the landlords who are, are here tonight that...
Right.
That we're aiming at anyway, as the ones that live in this, or Liverpool, or Syracuse.
Exactly. Uh, I have a lot of rental properties in my ward, and there are some of them that are beautiful, you know, that look better, better than private property. Uh, we're not targeting just landlords. We're targeting those people that do not take the responsibility for ownership.
Go ahead. Wait, wait a minute. She was first. Now, get to you, Sal.
Well, Ross, I'd like to know if you have, uh, complaints about ninety-two different pieces of property, or if you've got ninety-two people calling you about one piece of property.
No, not ninety-two on one piece of property, but I do have ninety-two complaints, and some of them are over and over again on the same piece of the property. But should I get thirty calls on the same piece of the property, after we've given a, a violation, an appearance ticket, and nothing's done?
No, but I think it's...
Then we're infringing on the rights of the property owners that live next to that garbage.
Sal?
Well, I've been here for eight years with the community, and I've pulled city courts on Thursday, and in eight years, I have not seen a, a housing accusatory instrument brought before Judge Sumner. Maybe they have it on different days when I'm not in court, but if you start putting pressure on these people, go through the accusatory instrument process, have them come into court, and push it, push these cases, these people that live in Camillus, Fayetteville, Jamesville de Witt, will be coming up here and they'll be fixing their house, real quick, once they know that the house is gonna be taken by judgment. Secondly, to fix these houses in your ward or in my ward, and I have a house right next door to me, okay, where there's three people, three, three different tenants living in there, and I've heard my share of rock music in the middle of the night, okay? These houses have to have some kind of repair, but for these landlords to take out a mortgage, okay, it's a lot of money. Where are they gonna get? How much money are they gonna get for these sixty thousand dollar homes? Are they gonna get eighty percent of the value? Do they qualify for these funds? Is there HUD money available? They're all over the city. These people, some of the landlords just don't have the funds. They might have five or six homes, but they just don't have the money, once they go to Fulton Savings Bank, to take out the mortgage and to make the monthly payments. And as, if you're a landlord and you've got people in there, it's a business, yes. So, now, if you're putting in these costs, that's fine, put the costs in, but how many of these people that we have here in Fulton, I read in the newspaper, were what, fifty-one, fifty-two percent federally, um, income subsidized, that means public assistance. Mr. Bell Fury tells me in his ward, sixty-four percent. Where are these people, if you've got a two-family home, people on public assistance, if HUD is subsidizing, sending the check to the landlord, where, where's the landlord gonna, gonna come up with the extra monies? Is HUD gonna pay the landlord for these certificates that are needed? So, these are all things that have to be discussed. I'm all in favor, I'm, I'm all in favor of having better housing in Fulton. Let's start looking at the economics, and let's start thinking the realities. Can the landlords get the money? Because the interest rates might be cheap, but I just purchased some rental property and fixed them up, and I know what I put into it. You go to Fulton Savings Bank, and Mike Pollak wants twenty percent down. It's not five percent, it's not this Dave D'ElDado thing on TV late night, buy the house for no money down. That's ridiculous. You go into a bank, they want twenty percent down. So, if it's sixty thousand dollars, you gotta come into Mike Pollak and say, "Here's your twelve grand, Mike, in cash, now give me the loan at eight, eight percent, and do I have to pay a, pay a point or two?" That's the reality. And most landlords, we're in a tough, we're at ten percent unemployment, I hear, in this county. This winter, we're gonna be at fourteen percent, I think. So, I wanna know where these landlords are gonna get these, these monies. How are they gonna pay the, you know, Fulton monthly payment, or they're gonna be in foreclosure?
In reference to that, a lot of the landlords that we're talking about are not the people that own one or two houses. The houses that are kept up to worst are from landlords that own ten, or twelve, or thirteen houses, and they're just getting all they can get out of them. In reference to the accusatory, uh, we, I send out a lot of violations in my ward, and Steve can confirm it, but as far as taking it a step further, we send out a violation, and from what Steve told me, I'm the older, only alderman that has given him an order to send out the accusatory to bring it further. And I think you're right, we have to apply pressure, and we have to see that our city, court, judge enforces the law.
In addition to that, we're not, we're not trying to get people to spend thirty thousand dollars on a home. That's ridiculous. We're trying to get people to clean garbage off their, off their porches and take garbage out of their living rooms that they've been stockpiling, and garbage around their houses, refrigerators, clean the cockroaches out, and get a toilet that works. If we can get people to do that, this would be a, this will be a successful program. We have no intention of going up to a landlord and, and mandating that he put forty thousand dollars worth of work into his house. I'm not even sure if that would be legal, but it certainly wouldn't be realistic to do.
As we said before, we did take out the, uh, the fees, and we'll handle that separately. The New York Conference of Mayors in one of their publications, um, last year, I think it was, said that, um, what municipal, municipality, municipalities should strive for is to have as many departments be self-sufficient as possible. Having some kind of fee, such as, uh, the building permits and the fee that would go with this, and like that, would help support his office, so it wouldn't have to come out of taxes.
Jim, could I say something else? Okay, as a, as a prime example, an accusatory, or a violation that I sent out to a landlord that has a group of homes, came up, uh, on my porch, came in my house, started arguing with me because he received a violation, and you know what he told me? The garbage in front of my house and the way it's kept isn't as bad as the one next to me. I told him we weren't having a contest to see who can have the worst-looking house in the city of Fulton. So, he didn't feel as if that he was justified to get the violation. That's the mentality you're dealing with.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Jim, will there be another public hearing before, uh, you include the fees and everything?
No, there's...
I know very many people here have even read the proposed code. I don't think they...
Well, this, the new code doesn't include the fees.
Uh, this is the public hearing on just the code itself, uh, the revised code, and as Alderman Lincoln said, uh, looks like what we're gonna do is just to table this for two weeks till, uh, the council or the ordinance committee can discuss with Spencer and with Steve. Some of the questions have come up tonight. If we do pass it, it still would be without any fees attached to it. That would be a separate issue. Um, what we can do is make sure that, if we address that in the future, we have it on the agenda in time, so when it's, you know, the agenda is put out, uh, there's a copy downstairs, I, everybody can see, it'll be on there, and then they can come and talk about it at that time.
Would you have to have another public hearing on the fees, Spencer?
No.
Right.
Yes.
A public hearing on the fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know, one, one thing in, that I learned about this in talking to, uh, Steve Lund, is that we have to have a vehicle like this, uh, to comply with the uniform code, or else the state can come in and mandate what we do. And the state can come in and inspect your properties and charge you a fee. So, thi, this is just a vehicle to get us compli, in compliance with what the state mandates. And if we don't do it, then they can say, "Fulton, you're not doing your job. We're gonna come in here and send our inspectors in, and they'll inspect all your properties, and charge you more than fifty bucks," if, if that's what it was.
The state is known for mandating a lot of things, which we can't afford, right? Not just pertaining to rental drugs.
Uh, my name is Alan Delain. Uh, I am a landlord, and I am for this proposal. I'm not worried about the cost of a fee. What I'm worried about is the house next door that's run down, that brings my property values down ten thousand. I'm worried about the house next door that I lose tenants from because they're playing loud music and having parties and throwing girls out windows at two o'clock in the morning. That's more of a cost to me than this fee, so I am for this. The one concern I have is that if we haven't been using the enforcement methods that we have available now, my only concern is that if we collect the fees and the inspections and we don't follow through with the enforcement, then we haven't gained anything. So, I hope you follow through with the enforcement, and I hope it does something to help the city and to help clean up our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Boy, and what is that? Surely, I wonder about the rental permits, where you said it's been for every two years, unless someone moves out, and every time someone moves out, you have to have another rental permit. Is there gonna be a char, if you do charge, is there gonna be a charge for every time, you, like, who'd you have five or six people that's had to move out within two years on a one unit? Is there gonna be a charge for five or six permits?
Well, that's something that you'd have to work out amongst yourselves. I would think that that would be excessive myself.
So, it really would be our option, whether to do it for each tenant or just a straight two years, regardless of the number of tenants.
It would be your option. My recommendation would be...
You have to redo this, right?
Well, Ron, this, this code says nothing about a charge. It says you have to get a rental permit. It doesn't say you have to pay for a rental permit.
You have to get a rental permit every two years, or whenever anybody moves out, or there's some kind of improvement done on the unit. That's fine. Now, next year, you decide a charge for the permits. This is already in... This is already in here, and once it's passed, we've got to pay for every permit.
Not unless that's the way we adopt a resolution, is to say for each permit, you have to pay. We could say that we're only charged for a two-year period, regardless of the number of tenants.
So we stop the doing inspection after each tenant moves out with the fee making only two years.
Right, because that's part of the code, yeah.
I understand it. Now, the other thing is, when you do the inspections, there's probably a lot of apartments in the city, it's not like more than one person. Is there a time limit? Because we want to have to leave empty, waiting for somebody to inspect them, who's got 50 more to inspect before you come to them. There will be leeway there? We don't want to lose rental money waiting for, have someone inspect them.
Whoever's occupying that space at the time can give you permission to go in. It seems to me that they know it's a part of a program, that they would allow that.
In the beginning, it says the mayor may appoint one or more inspectors if need may appear to undergo the supervision and direction of the code enforcement director and to exercise any portion of powers to these directors he may direct. The compensation of such inspectors shall be by the respective contracts, and each inspector shall have to trade in for an accessory penalty. That's an unlimited amount of hiring.
Right.
It's not simply, he can be hired one more person or two more. The mayor can appoint as many people as he wants, and have a separate contract with each person as to salaries.
I believe it'd be up to the council to set salaries, though, and we can just say we're not going to set more than one salary for an inspector.
That would be with the approval of the common council.
Ron, I would agree with what you're saying. I think we should have, as in 72-8B, where it says, with the approval of the common council.
On that one?
On that one, it says, the designation of a director of code enforcement established, he/she may be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the common council. Now, in the next paragraph, I think we should add, the mayor may appoint one or more inspectors with the approval of the common council. I think we should be specific in 78-3, like we are in 78-2. It does give the mayor a lot of, a lot of leeway here.
That, but the fact is that we still prove money expenditures too, John.
I agree, I'd like to see it in there.
Anybody else?
The community, as I mentioned, recently sent for a book on cost-saving mechanisms and municipalities, and gave it to Mayor. You know, I'm looking at it, I'm sure it's a pleasure, but one of the things that other cities are doing is where they have full-time fire departments, training the firemen as code enforcement officers to be a backup for your existing code enforcement staff.
You already have seven qualified code enforcement officers in your department now. Fully certified through the state of New York.
They do inspections of all the commercial buildings that are also required by...
I had no idea. Mark the local.
Anything else? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. We need the resolution.
Whereas the public members of the common council and all in attendance have had an opportunity to express their oral and written views on this matter, now therefore be it resolved that local law number two of 1992, which would amend chapter 78 of the Fulton City Code entitled Fire Prevention and Building Construction, is hereby tabled until the next regular meeting of common council.
Wait a minute. Change that to is hereby adopted. We'll get a motion in a second, and then another motion to table it.
No, we can do it. You can't fix it now.
Someone hasn't have a motion on it.
Yes, my ass, I'm glad we spoke to you.
No, we're going to table it. You're just going to do it the right way.
Okay.
You can just get...
Hereby adopted.
Hereby adopted.
I'm second.
I move it, Ross.
Lincoln moved it. Ross, second it. There are motion to table.
I'll move it.
We have several motions. Second?
Second.
Second. Call a roll on the table. You get a chance.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion to table carried.
Thank you. Is there a date on that?
I'll just sit next to her and...
Item number three.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on October 6, 1992, at 7:30 PM DST in the common council chambers of the municipal building, Fulton, New York, relative to proposed local law number three of 1992, which would add chapter 79 to the Fulton City Code entitled Unsafe Structures.
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
You know, I encourage everyone who comes down to get a copy of this uniform code to pick up one of the ones we're going to have a public hearing on for unsafe structures also.
And we'll see everybody on this, call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number four.
Resolved that Niagara Mohawk install a 100-watt high-pressure sodium streetlight on pole number 0336008 between 221 and 223 Seneca Street.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Number five.
Resolved that the city clerk is records management officer for the city of Fulton be authorized to dispose of records that no longer have a purposeful, useful, or legal purpose in accordance with the laws of the state education department and the MU1 retention schedule.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Second. Discussion? Now, you said that this was cleared through the, what part of the state archives?
The state archives came down to check it over and...
Okay, and each department had?
Mm-hmm.
And so it clears all those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number six.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise local voter registration to be held on October 8 and October 10, 1992.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is that all here at City Hall, that'll be, or are there two places?
East side is here at City Hall, the community room, west side is always over the wall.
One more, okay.
Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number seven.
Yeah, according to the agenda, this name's NAF Electric. We talked with the fire chief at the 7 o'clock pre-meeting, and he said that John Perfumi, who is the alarm superintendent, can do this work, he and one other person, and get paid overtime at a cost of not to exceed $120. The quote from NAF Electric was $275, so we're going to go with John Perfumi.
All right. We'll see.
Resolved that overtime be authorized for firefighters John Perfumi and Frank Abbott to move fire signal wires at the corner of South Second Street and Rochester Street, and at the corner of Cedar and West Second Street, at a cost not to exceed $120.
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Any discussion? Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number eight.
Resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign amendment number one to the Bristol Hill landfill agreement between the city of Fulton and Sterns and Wheeler, at a cost not to exceed $6,800, to be a direct charge to the 1987-2 capital account.
And this is money that will be refunded, reimbursed to the city by the county.
I hear it's out there.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number nine.
Resolved that the police department conduct a traffic study for the feasibility of a no parking on the east side of North Fifth Street.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number ten.
Resolved that the police department conduct a traffic study for the feasibility of installing a stop sign on the north side of Ontario Street at the intersection of North Third and Ontario Streets.
Okay, that's been changed, we're going to do a traffic study instead of the stop sign.
Conduct a traffic study for the feasibility.
Okay. Make the motion.
And the reason why that was changed is because we want the police department and the engineering department to figure out whether or not that is a actual street before we put a stop sign. We're going to do something there, but we want to give the police department the authority to do that first.
Make the motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number eleven.
Whereas on July 16, 1991, the city of Fulton conducted an auction of the vacant land situated at 9 South Fourth Street, and the successful bidder was Larry Munger. And whereas at the time of said auction, all potential purchasers were informed that all delinquent taxes and other charges, namely water, were considered paid in full by the issuance of the tax deed from the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council hereby waives the delinquent water and sewer charge in the amount of $507.53 plus any penalties, and directs the city chamberlain to correct the tax bill for the property owned by Larry Munger located at 9 South Fourth Street.
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under discussion, item number one, overtime for recreation department, the Cracker Barrel Fair. Carry.
I need to, I have to period of overtime work for the department, sign for that. We're trying to, um, so we're beginning to burn it for...
Yeah, we're being reimbursed for overtime, and overtime is not some good news.
That wasn't originally budgeted, right, the overtime?
Right.
I just think, you know, over, that's all. There is a reservation. See, the mayor has told, they can't use any overtime, although, without authorization...
They have authorization by a...
A bear.
That's the common council.
We just did it with the fire department.
By resolution.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
We're under a resolution authorizing overtime for the Cracker Barrel Fair.
The funds are coming from the Cracker Barrel Fair anyway, it's not anything that's going to cost the city any money.
Right.
So there really shouldn't be a problem with it. I just think Barry doesn't want to get crucified for...
Yeah, I mean, he's been in the hot seat enough this year.
He's just trying to cover himself, that's all.
Yeah. Of course, you and I have been too, so...
I think everybody has.
One man on duty from the recreation department for the Cracker Barrel Fair set expenses to be borne by the Cracker Barrel Fair.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Call a roll.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number two, is the Fulton Housing Authority establish maintenance position? John, you want to discuss what you...
John, can I, can I say one thing about that?
And I think John Perkey has something.
We haven't had a budget meeting, and we're having one tomorrow, and I was going to ask that you come there so we can, we could discuss this.
I'll be happy to attend.
Okay. So I don't know if you had anything further to say, but...
Uh, I do want to add one more to all the comments that I made two weeks ago. Ron Woodward and I discussed this thoroughly about adding Mel Cooper. We still feel it's a good idea, and we've also talked about putting these people on shift work, alternate shift work, so each one has a fair shot at having some evenings open, working these men, some from their regular shift now, and some from a noon-to-eight shift, to keep overtime down also.
We're going to be 7:00 tomorrow in the Chamberlain's office.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Item number three, North Bay Campgrounds, Alderman Craig.
Okay, we've had a lot of controversy over North Bay Campground, and a committee consisting of representatives from the Recreation Commission, Recreation Department, Fulton Community Development, Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce, the Lake Neowana Committee, we've been meeting regularly to discuss what we could do with North Bay Campground. One of the proposals that came up was trying to lease the North Bay Campground, and there was some concern whether the state would allow us to do that. So this committee wrote to the state, and they did give us permission to lease the North Bay Campground. One of the things, in order to do that, that the state would mandate of us, is that we keep it as a recreational area. It has to be a campground or some kind of recreational area. They want us, if it is a campground, to charge reasonable fees, not to do anything to differ the boundaries of what's presently there. They did say that they would like all fees from a leasing to go back into the, into parks and recreation for the city, not to be used for some other thing. Let's see if there's anything else here. That is, that is pretty much it. The recommendation coming from this committee is that we do try to lease North Bay Campground. The past few years, we haven't been able to manage it ourselves as a city to make a profit for one reason or another, and we think that if we could get someone in there who had some interest in running the campground, that we could hopefully charge enough to pay the taxes on the land and maybe make some money to put it into the, into parks and recreation, which sorely need the money. So, uh, what we would like to do is just to advertise in the paper to see if there is anyone that has any interest in leasing a campground.
Uh, I would like, I'll add, John, that you might even wanna look into some of these, like, KOA organizations that may be interested in not only leasing your campground, but being able to help you populate it in return, give those money back.
You know, I, I think we'd like to lease it to somebody who, who does have some experience in this area. You know, our intent right now is to see if there is anyone with any interest. So we can, we can return it to a campground facility. Not, not that I'm aware of. It was only the state that.
One time we were gonna sell North Bay, and we had to get the approval of the federal government, because that North Bay was developed with all federal funded money. I think, I don't know about Great Bay, but I know North Bay was. Because back eighty-five, we had a fire for North Bay, uh, quite a lot of money. And we were just, we were discussing selling, because same reason why you want to lease it now, because we couldn't afford to keep it, it was costing too much money. And I think five of the off-sixth Alderman, you know, wanted, wanted to sell. And that just got tabled. Now that's where you are today. But I would check with the federal government before you do anything in North Bay.
Okay. Because we were under the impression it was only state funds. I wish Carol was here.
Yes.
Is there any set amount that they would be leasing it for? I mean, how does the leasing lease deal with the city? I mean, do you lease it for like ten thousand, and, and the leasing is able to make fifty thousand, and how's that gonna work?
There, there's a couple different ways to do this. Uh, according to the state, we could either lease it or have a, a management company run it for us. If you have a management company run it for you, you are responsible for all the improvements that you make to the, to the campground. If you lease it, the leasing is responsible for making all the improvements. As far as a dollar value, uh, we haven't really gotten that far. I know we, we don't wanna lose money on the place, and we presently pay six thousand dollars a year in taxes on North Bay. So I'm sure it would be at least that much. We don't wanna lose money.
Would that be a month, or would that be like a season?
Well, I think we would do it for the season, and, you know, the terms of the lease, we really haven't gotten that far. What we wanted to do, uh, because there's public interest in using North Bay Campground was to get something going on it. So we've been meeting periodically to see if we could get approval to do something, uh, and we've gotten it from the state now. You know, we'll have to check with the federal government. Spencer, did you know anything regarding the federal government on North Bay?
No, it's the, uh, the state is pretty much the only bureaucracy of the federal.
Because Tony Corsonetti says when he, when he was on the council, that they tried to sell North Bay and that the federal government was involved.
The federal government was involved in the original, um, funding, however, they have no, uh, no real right at this point in the game to, uh, to prevent the city of Fulton from either getting, what John said, a management company and or lease agreement. Uh, so I don't believe we'll have any problems with the federal government.
Is that, uh, that area of land that they're looking to transfer to the YMCA, that's part of North Bay, isn't it?
No.
Over on the street. I don't believe it. Because for that, on that, I know from the Y, that they have to get state approval and national park approval for the land transfer to work out that deal, so that there may be some, I don't think it's a task.
The property was.
No, it, when, when we checked it out, we thought that the state was the only one that we had, we had to get any kind of approval from, so.
Certainly, I'll check again, but if I had to say, if this, only, only bureaucratic group we've gotta jump to is to the state council.
Any other questions?
Do a lease then. I, I would think the city of Fulton, maybe you could even widen to the city school district. You know, a lot of people in the city that live within the city school district use those fishing facilities over there. And you might wanna stipulate something that lease, where they can still go and launch their boat free of charge. Because somebody came there and leased, they might charge a purse of two dollars to launch a boat every time.
That, that was discussed, and if we did lease it to someone, uh, if they were to charge a fee, it would be a reasonable fee. I mean, we're not gonna have somebody come in and charge you fifty bucks to, to launch your boat or something. It would be a reasonable fee. All these things have to be worked out in the lease, and really what we wanna do is to see if there's anyone with, with some campground experience out there that might wanna take this over for the season, so that we could pay our taxes and, and make a few dollars for the Recreation Department, and this person who's a, you know, a private businessman could, could make some money himself. Because the rates have been very low, and, and, you know, we've been down there, and it is a, a real nice facility down there. You know, there's approximately fifty sites down there that, uh, and it's in, it's in a good location, right on, on the, in the Bay Area there. It should, it's something that, that should be used and not be closed.
Any other questions on that? How's that, John?
Yeah, I guess what I'd like to do is just go ahead and, and put something in the paper, just, just to advertise and see if there's somebody out there that has some interest. You know, we can be, we can be checking with the federal government at the same time, but let's see if we, if we put something in, in the newspapers, if, if there's somebody out there that might wanna come in and, and take this over for us.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for any parties interested in leasing North Bay Campgrounds.
Make the motion.
I'll move it.
Second. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
First Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Third Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
The next item is public referendum. This has to do with the Fire and Police Commission, which we discussed in February and March and on and on.
The police chief and I wonder the understanding that we had to do this within sixty days of an election.
Right. The municipal, the municipal rule law requires that, uh, if a local law requires, um, mandatory referendum, which this, uh, got adopted sixty days before the general election.
So we do that, right?
It's forty something for a general election.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
We were on the assumption that was within sixty days. That's why we didn't do it last February or March, too. Like that.
No. Always adopted.
What did I tell you, John?
And then, no more than sixty days. You're not passed. It's sixty days.
And the no sixty days, or within sixty days?
You've gotta adopt the local law sixty days before the general election. No less than sixty days before the general election.
So it would have had to been before September, um, excuse me, about September.
Well, whatever sixty days is from the, the general election.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, is that back then. We were on the assumption that it was within sixty days.
That's why we didn't take any action back then, so we'll wait till September to do it, and then it would fall within the sixty days. Because if we had done it back then, we would have had to have a special election.
Have a special election, that's a change.
You're right, have a special election.
Because if you, if you don't, that's sixty days, right?
That's what I'm saying. You might avoid the special election because of the cost. The mayor and majority of the council said, well, let's wait and do it in the November election.
The municipal rule law requires the law to be adopted, uh, no less than sixty days before the general election.
How come they let it go? How come they let it go under our, why weren't they told?
They were told, they were advised, and I have, uh, this was discussed.
Should have overruled the veto, that's what we should have done.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's the problem. If we were to overridden the veto, we wouldn't be in this mess today.
Or back in March, it would have been more than the sixty days. This is what I'm saying, and I, I talked to Chief Stafford today about it, and he was on the same assumption that we had to do it within the sixty days. That's why we waited till this meeting and not the last meeting.
I, no one's, no one's discussed this with me for March, and at the time, over and over and over, I explained it long, and, so, I've explained it was sixty days before, you need to camp prior to adoption, or the general election, or unless you have a special election.
Now you have a special election, but as far as the November election.
I think where, where some of the, uh, confusion's coming up is someone saying back at the time, we never talked about the referendum, that the referendum has to be held within sixty days of the date that the council passes. That's the local law. That's where it was stated. That's the way it was stated. That's what power everybody understood.
Not by me.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's, that's not the way I understood it.
Once we passed the resolution, it had to be held sixty days after that resolution was passed.
Adopted, right.
Within sixty days of the time that we passed.
Right, mandatory referendum has to be held sixty day, at least sixty days after its adoption.
Within that sixty days. Within sixty days, that's the way it was phrased to us. Within.
Not. At least. So we're saying, we need to just be within.
That's, no, it's adopted. Sixty days. After adoption.
Yeah, I don't even know if we can do that. Not less than sixty days.
You wouldn't be able to do it weekly, don't you?
And that's.
In New York, they'll jump all over.
That's what we misunderstood. We thought it was within sixty days. So it's a dead, it's a moot point.
Yeah.
Good idea.
We've done that before.
That's a good idea. I mean, we haven't always done everything.
No, if we, if we can't, if we're gonna fly, then.
New York's can veto it. I know.
You got that? Walk along.
I'll move it.
Wait, what are we gonna vote on?
We're gonna vote on, on a, on a referendum. Public referendum.
Well, if we go into executive session, can you find it? Come back out.
You, you're, you're gonna go to executive session?
Yeah, she doesn't have a weather, what is down in your office. I think it's, yeah. So we, we do our executive session items and then.
Where to go to executive session?
You know, I, I, I just feel a, a need to set the record straight, um, you know, I rendered a legal opinion months ago, and it hasn't changed. And, uh, uh, I'm now asking about this so close to the time date, and never bring it up for months. I think that's unfair.
Well, like, like you said, we were on the assumption that we couldn't do anything anyway until this meeting, or sooner.
We'd sure.
To bring it up in, in July or August, it would be useless, from our standpoint, because we thought we were doing it anyway, until we were within the sixty days.
We'll start the whole process all over again.
Yeah.
But I, I think that, you know, we, we oughta do something.
That's why I didn't record, that's why I waited.
I didn't even know what this was about. And, you know, I knew it was about, I didn't know what we were gonna do with it. You know, if we can't do it, it doesn't make sense to vote on. I mean, if we're out of the realm of the law, we're gonna have to do a special election, which we should do. I mean, there's no point in voting on something that we can't legally do.
Well, you, you say that, Ross, but then we, uh, had a hiring freeze on, and then we had it lifted by the judge, and then we, after having it lifted by the judge, we put a hiring freeze on again.
Yeah, but do you wanna keep going on and making the same mistakes? I'd hate to teach my students that way, that to keep doing the same thing over the wrong way. If we need to have a special election, I guess, if we really wanna do it, we'll pay for it. But there's no point in voting on something that we can't do.
Right, but at that time, I, I could recall you saying that we do not need to spend the money for a special election. I remember you sitting right there and saying that.
But that got to do it now, though. That's already passed. That's already passed, and it's gonna be useless for us to bring up what happened in January, February, and March. Let's move forward. We can't do anything about what happened. Let's try to make it better. I just don't wanna put on if we're not within the limits of the law.
Then we can rescind, we can rescind the resolution.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, this is. Legally.
Is there anything from the public? Yes, sir? Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Dick Allen, I live over Patrick Circle, and would like to know the city's intention as reference to our street. Uh, it's been sort of paved for up for about six weeks now, whether they are gonna repave it, fix it, et cetera, uh, before winter sets in.
I, I can answer that from a third ward alderman's standpoint, is I want the street paved. That's why we started to do, uh, some work with the water department over there, uh, to fix catch basins and such, and, uh, it's on the paving list, and I'd like to see it paved.
Well, this is what we were told last year, and also, but nothing ever got done. And that is why we would like to know if it's gonna stay in its existing condition, or if it's gonna be done before winter sets in.
I assume.
Well.
But liking and getting it done is two different things. That's why we came down to like, to see, uh, what I'm thinking, considering, and, uh.
I know when John submitted his list, uh, to the paving committee and the rest of the common council, that street was on there. It was under my assumption that everything that was on the, uh, the lists that were submitted, uh, and finalized, they were all gonna be paved. And as of yet, I have nothing paved in the first ward. You know, that I'm a little annoyed about.
Okay, well, I have nothing paved in my ward either that I know of right now. When the paving list was made out, everything that was put on there was not promised to be paved. We said we were going to spend thirty-five thousand dollars in each ward because that's the amount of money we had to spend. And when the money ran out, we would move to another ward to give each ward an equal share. We weren't going to put, uh, sixty thousand dollars in the, in the third ward and leave another ward without nothing. Uh, we, we've talked about this. Uh, in Jimmy Meyer's ward, he did not have a lot of paving to do, and he did not use the money. So, let me finish. And what hopefully we're going to do, if it's all right with Jimmy, take that money and go over and do your street. And, and then because of the, uh.
This is new to me, Ross.
Well, John.
I have about five or six streets on my list.
No, John said you only have one street, and, and he said you'd be glad to give that money up to him. That's what he told me. Thirty-one and some change. Thirty-one and some change.
Thirty-one thousand for four. Pardon?
Yeah, almost three.
Anything else, Dick?
I feel that we have my question answered. Uh, I wanna know what the city's intent is there.
I, I think it was, it was on the original list. I think that, you know, they've been preparing to work over there. We probably oughta go there next, but.
Yeah, 'cause what we did was, you know, it was my understanding that we came up with a list that was, that was two hundred thousand dollars for paving. And, uh, that's what we had budgeted with chips, and what we budgeted is two hundred thousand. So, you know, it was, it was my intention that everything on there would be paved, and that's why.
But that was a final list?
Yeah, we coordinated with the water department to come over there, so.
Doesn't anyone here know what's gonna be done, what's not gonna be done? I mean, it's like we're talking about a magic person. It seems to me there should be someone here. It's interesting, seeing as you people represent the city of Fulton, no one else other than the mayor is nodding. That he has to know what's going on. I would leave, in my mind.
Okay, okay. What's going on with paving? You have the list, you have the man, and you're doing the paving. Maybe you can throw a thing.
I have the list. I had it on there. It's gonna be the second job to do. Then I was told by you to spend thirty-five thousand dollars per ward, and that's when I got hold of John Cook, and he's asking what they wanna do over there. And that's what we're setting right now. We're ready to go. Somebody gives me the okay to go. We're ready to go, somebody gives me the okay to go.
I, I just soon go over there and, and get that completed, but I think, you know...
I think we should stick to the original list.
Yeah, Jim and I also have some streets on there that are, that must have been paved.
So it would be nice, whether it's your ward or not, if each one of you go over there and take a look, it will happen.
No, I, I'm fully aware of that problem, I looked at, in fact, we drove around one day and looked at all the streets and the particular wards that were in need of being paved.
I think we're missing, maybe you haven't driven by it in six weeks, see, the city started the job, it's not the same street as we were complaining about a year and a half ago. Now we got barricades halfway up the road, rocks and dirt, not in any way graded into a safe situation, that's what you got. And I'm above, you know, the next thing we do is, you know, there, you, I think you got a problem. Uh, that's what I'm saying, I've had my car out onto a barricade, it's been there six weeks, I think, I think I go to an attorney and ask, is this a reasonable amount of time to leave a barricade out in front of my house halfway up the middle of the street with no lights on it, no signs on it, no nothing on it? Piles of gravel, eight, ten inches above the grade of the street.
Well, they're funny, though.
Well, funny, but, but I think you're missing, something is, is missing, the job isn't started. So it's not the same problem we had a year and a half ago when we were promised that it was gonna be done, it's not the same problem we're here asking you to do something about now. Now, now you have created a problem.
John, but, but the paving wasn't started, it was because of, of Roger had to go over and do some work over there, right, that's why it got to be more of a mess?
The coordination of departments has created a problem for you folks, the way I see it.
John, it's...
Is this, the, the worst, I think, I think what happened was, uh, the eight halls that, the rest of the jury, uh, pulled the paving crews out of the third ward and sent them over to the fifth.
I, I, I don't think that happened, I never gave Bucky any order to go in any ward in any specific order.
But somebody's given Buck direction.
Bucky, did I, did I tell you where to start or where to go? Okay, uh, John.
And we had a week, we had the week because we had to go on recyclables, first part of the month. We did not wanna open another street up and leave it open for two weeks, knowing we couldn't get back there for two weeks. So, Mr. Hallston had three streets on there, he wanted top coat only, so we put the top coat on during that one week, that's the reason we went in there, to pave that. Then the bottom, we had no recyclables, so we're, no, nobody... They were put on in the back room after your meeting, you were at the meeting, after this meeting, one meeting, one night, and he's had to add them all, nobody had access to it.
We stopped asking the buck here, everyone's asking the buck blaming all the aldermen, there's a problem here, the gentleman has asked, what is the problem gonna be taken care of?
I asked for a legal opinion, that wasn't a reasonable amount of time for a city taxpayer to respect, the city to do, or complete a job that they, that they started. I wasn't out there with a deck and a shovel and a jackhammer and bringing in truckload of dirt. City starts the job, what's a, can I have a legal opinion on what the city would consider to be a reasonable amount of time?
Legally, you stand at your car, the city's a problem.
Would that be legal, Jim? Listen, John, the work that was started on Patrick Circle by, what, the water crew?
The work that was started on Patrick Circle by the water crew was done in coordination of departments and the intention that that road was gonna be paved second, from, from me.
Was that work?
I tried to coordinate the water department, because you have a lot of water problems over there, I brought, uh, Bucky and Roger Parsons over there and said, uh, what needs to be done to fix this right? Because I want, I would like to get this street paved this year. In my, in my mind, it was, it was the second worst street in the world. Fourth Street was first and then, and then Patrick Circle, only because school buses drive up and down Fourth Street. So, I tried to coordinate getting the work done in advance, so that we didn't pave it and then have the water department come there after and dig it up. So, I tried to do that, because it was my understanding that that's where the DPW was gonna go next to pave, so that's why you're, that's why you're dug up.
Problem is, nobody's doing anything about it, and now, it looks to me as if the city's got a problem.
I, I think we have, I think we have to proceed with, with paving that street.
Is the work that the water department did part of the I and I project? Okay. Is there anything you can do to help us pave, money-wise? Not really, okay. I think what we, I think what we... Here, here, John.
Here, here's what we should do, let's pave Patrick Circle next, uh, and then continue on with the list, and next year, you can start in some other ward paving. And I'll, 'cause I'm getting, I'm getting most of the, most of the money this year, not most of it, but in comparison to Jimmy, I'm getting, I'm getting more than he is. I'll give him my money next year. But by the same token, I voted for forty-nine thousand dollars worth of trees to be cut down, and I'm getting none cut down in my ward, 'cause I don't have any to cut down, so...
Sounded good to me.
I'm Kevin, thirty-seven, Patrick Circle, and live in the neighborhood of Dick and Paul. And I, I, um, wanna urge that the, the road be paved. Before it be paved, I'd like to make sure that there's, uh, a storm, uh, drain put on our side of the road, uh, to be sure that the drainage is as good as possible before the road is paved. Uh, and, and also to urge you that in fact, uh, that, that not only the paving be done, but that the water problems in the back be resolved, and, and, John, you're right, uh, we did bring people over, we did walk that area. It was obviously a wet summer, but I, I can tell you, the water is just literally at surface level. And something has to be done, several people have talked about maintaining property values and keeping property up in the city. One worse way to do it is, is to have homeowners who wanna try and keep it up and, and don't work with them and don't try and help them. John talked about money for his trees, not gonna have any to cut down in my place, but they're all rotting. And, and I say that literally, I was just pulling out of the front yard, I'm losing them in the backyard because they're literally drowning. And if we wanna keep the city up, this, we've got to find ways to resolve these kinds of problems. But I just wanna urge it and, and tell you that the problem really is urgent, we do need the storm sewers and we, we need the paving done. Need it done this year, before the road deteriorates more and the, the flowers just flower up, we have more safety problems, more water problems.
Like we were John, and that if we've already started the work over there, we should continue it at least, not leave it all winter long. About the what? That's a fifty-fifty, isn't it? Yeah. The property owner at this time has to pay fifty percent of the cost for curbs. Well, have them...
What I was gonna do... What, what my, what my intention was, was when Bucky told me the actual date he was gonna go to Patrick Circle, I was gonna come over there and talk to all the residents about curbing. So, and, uh, he was gonna give me a price as far as what it would cost residents. They can be put in afterwards, without affecting the, the street, literally.
I just, I was just like, reiterate, Andy, you're gonna save, just for, for safety sake, I would much prefer, I wouldn't be here tonight if you hadn't started digging up the road. I could live with it, I was living with it, maybe you pulled me off, you pulled me off, I read the paper every day about probably out here, I'm gonna contribute my taxes, I can live with it. But now you've got a serious, and I wanna make sure you understand, it's a safety problem there. I've got three children under ten in an area that I don't want them to be. School buses come down the road, the traffic is bad, and you have a serious safety liability on your hands. There's been turning four roads ahead of me right here that I think if you have to take a K. I just urge that you please, don't rush us aside and, and look for money, you've got a serious safety problem on the city's hands right now. Down the Hannibal couple of years ago, left a large pile of, of gravel, and, uh, they were constructing a road. In the event, some kids went drinking one night, had, got into a car, didn't see this gravel smashed into and the gale got cut up. Jury came back with a seven-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar verdict. And that was, uh, just a few years ago, Supreme Court kinda custody.
We all agree that we'll continue doing Patrick Circle, then?
Yeah.
Right, I would also like to say I would appreciate it if, uh, Alderman did not make assumptions, because we're chairman of certain committees, that we give directives to people because we think someone should get preferential treatment. That is not the way I operate, I never have and never will, and do not ever, uh, state that as a statement of fact, thank you.
But Buck has to have some direction on where to go.
He does have to have, have direction, but I never directed him to do anything, to give anyone any special treatment.
Well, I'm not, I didn't imply that, like...
You, you did imply that, and I did not appreciate it, and I will not accept it.
The two of you sent him over to the fifth ward to do something.
I did not send him anywhere, and don't say it again, I did not give him a directive, he had the list and he worked from it. Going over in Dave Hallston's ward does not enhance my life.
Can we move on to something else? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna do Patrick Circle, and next year, Jimmy, you'll start in your ward.
Anybody else? That's it, the public referendum? Uh, she doesn't have it with her right now, we have three matters for executive session, she can get that while we're doing that and then do it after our executive session, still be in public session.
Well...
We do try to, we try to leave everything, or try to get in everything before the executive session, so that, 'cause most people leave... Well, obviously, that's something that should be discussed in the executive session first, and that's what we did, that's why we came back out in a public session. You don't have to.
It wouldn't have changed my vote. Well, you have every, you know, opportunity to stay and wait until we come out of executive session, I mean, this is a public meeting, Ron.
We don't like staying back there anymore, and you like having to stay back there, it just makes the night longer. Anything else? Bill.
Okay, does everybody else, is the last, yeah, I guess it's my turn. In case, uh, you people don't know, I'm Bill Brown, I'm president of the CSCA of the city of Fulton. Few statements were made, uh, information that was brought back to me within the past couple of weeks pertaining to Alderman with harassment of city employees. I brought it to, I had a meeting with my people a couple of weeks ago, in fact, it turned into a full-fledged argument. And I instructed my people in no way, shape, or form were they to interfere in other departments' decisions, department head's decisions, Alderman decisions. Yet you people insist, I'm not saying all of you, it's select a few, insist and harassing my people during city hours. I want it stopped, it won't happen again. I'm not gonna mention who the Aldermen are, you know who they are. Number two, it's also been brought to my attention, uh, that a few select Aldermen are going to the rank and file of the CSCA. And it's gotten back to the police department's union because a few of the police officers have informed me, also a few firefighters have informed me. That during our last negotiation session of June fifteenth, CSCA walked out in negotiations. We didn't walk out in negotiations, and you people know that. The Aldermen that were in session with CSCA know that we didn't walk out of session. We went to a formal impasse, which simply states that neither the city of Fulton nor CSCA at that point could reach or render a decision on contract. Yet you people are telling city employees CSCA walked out of the contract talks. Also, we are coming up at twenty months without a contract. And we can't seem to get you six people together, sit down and talk with us. I think it's getting a little ridiculous now, we continue to do our jobs day in, day out. I was, brought to my attention, uh, an Alderman made a comment to me over Labor Day weekend, that they were tired of hearing the city employees bicker because they didn't have a contract. And the statement was vague, that you get more with sugar than you do with vinegar, you're not getting any sugar out of us. You people are passing out vinegar, we're gonna give it right back to you. It's been a long time, my people are sick and tired of sitting back while you people sit up here, perfect example tonight. You bicker and argue between each other, you can't get together on anything. Your poor excuse for a common council. It's all you do is argue with each other. I see it in closed session, I've been in closed session with you people before, same thing happens, you can't get together on anything. All I'm asking for is a date for contract negotiations, let's get back to the table, give the police department same consideration. You settled with the party department after a long hassle, how about settle with the rest of us? We work for you people, we work for the taxpayers of this city, give them consideration. We've been working short-handed, we took the layoffs, but you haven't heard CSCA complain about it, we bit the bullet just like everybody else. Now give us a contract, that's all I'm asking. You make certain concessions throughout the city, you tell me when I go to the negotiation table with you, you don't have the money. Past record shows you've got the money, I don't think we need to take that any further. If you raise your eyebrow, I'll hit you. You know what I'm talking about, past couple of weeks, perfect example. I have nothing against other, uh, city employees getting paid raises, hey, I'm happy for them, but you gotta take care of the rest of your employees also. There's a small thing, two paragraphs line in the Taylor law, that protects you, wasn't for the unions. That keeps us from going on strike, that keeps us from having sick outs, 'cause I'll tell you, if it hadn't been for those two paragraphs, we would've shut this city down a long time ago. But we continue to do our jobs, give us that kind of consideration, give us a contract, give the rest of the city employees a contract, give us the respect that we deserve. I've been told by talking with different Aldermen, hey, when we gonna get back to the table? It's up to you people, I can talk to your negotiator, and your negotiator has no idea what's going on. What you have to say is from you people. My negotiator, he's ready to go, he's been ready to go, all I want is a date, you give me a date, we'll be there. Whether we resolve anything, that's not a story, but at least we get back to the table and talk again. You've got eighty-seven CSCA members in this unit, they're outraged, it has ramped to... You've got eighty-seven CSEA members in this unit, they're outraged, it has ramped up here with City of Fulton. I don't know, you've got police departments, you know, they're waiting for a contract. We're the public service, you're public service, you were elected by the taxpayers to take care of the city. City employees are part of the city. They'll take care of us going upstate.
Anybody else? Yeah, okay.
Um, that'd be a cat word that, only thing is, is the public, without having to come in, to get a paper, has no clue on what it said within the cat ordinance. Was wondering if someone could read the whole ordinance, so the public can hear themselves and tell if it's an understanding.
Not at this time.
Or could we do this, could, uh, uh, I'll just go on record as saying that if anyone interested in reading the ordinance can pick up a copy of it down at the city clerk's office. That way those interested will be able to go down and pick a copy up.
Anything else? First word?
I'd love to write down.
Second word?
Yeah, um, I was thinking, we don't have a public work committee, closest thing we have is a paving committee. But recycling pickup, I think come winter, if we get a bad snowstorm, the week that we're picking them up, that week, I think we could end up with some big problems. I think maybe, uh, a committee should sit down with Bucky, and we should reevaluate what we've done through the summer. We did it through the summer, maybe to cover vacations and do some paving. But once we come up to winter, we might, we might anticipate going to a bi-weekly thing through the winter month, and then come summer, maybe we want to return to once a month or something. But we've had time to evaluate and how we're dealing with it, five, six months, I think we really ought to sit down, take a look at it, and see how we're doing.
Okay? Um, maybe the paving committee can do that, or, I don't know, if we want to take the time, we have Bucky up here at budget time to talk about that.
I'm saying, I'm saying if there was something we were going to do to bi-weekly, we might, you know, consider doing it come November. You know, because snowstorm come November, December, so it would be something we wanted to do before budget time.
And we're supposed to meet with Alderman Department, they had, I guess, during the month of October.
Okay.
And part of the discussion would be on, on personnel and overtime and like that, so maybe we could just, um, talk to them about it, see how his schedule is with, you know, what happens when you have a snowstorm, how many men does he need for the flowers, and you're saying, how many are left for garbage and recyclables?
We get one during the day, and everybody's on in recyclables, you know?
Right.
Something's gonna, something.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Right. Anything else?
No, not tonight.
Third word?
Nothing.
Sixth word?
I agree with Bill, I think we do need to look at seriously at giving both of these people a contract. We are much closer with the Police Department than what we had been. Um, it is unfortunate, the animosity that's been caused and the hard feelings. Everybody wants to get paid for what they're doing, and it's only the fair thing to do. Unfortunately, I don't think the blame should all be placed on the council or the mayor. The situation in the city did not happen over the past six months, we were left with it. We were left eight hundred thousand dollars in debt, we didn't create it, and it can't change just in a few months. People need to be patient, we're trying, we're all trying, all the Aldermen, but it's difficult, and we don't have the resources to work with. So I'm just asking that maybe you be patient, and hopefully we can come to some agreement where we can satisfy the people that work for the city. And I'm well aware that if you don't have a Police Department, a Fire Department, DPW, the city's not going to be a city. So he's really right in a lot of things he says.
Uh, something I'd like to add too, uh, maybe so, these inaccuracies do not happen again with people's wages, and I'm not just talking about department heads, I'm talking about DPW workers, um, people that work in the Recreation Department, maybe we could pass a resolution, or maybe we can just have Jeanette go and look at other personnel departments and see what their salary structures are, so that people coming in to work for the City of Fulton, uh, won't be, um, you know, so we can get some starting ranges for people coming into the City of Fulton to work for, so that these inaccuracies won't happen again. I mean, uh, the two people that, uh, left, uh, the Chamberlain and the, uh, city clerk, uh, when they left, they left at about thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, when Joe and Jim both started as, in the respective offices, they started at sixteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars less than, uh, the credit suckers.
Sixteen thousand dollars for the probationary starting salary. After four, after six months of the probationary period, their salary increased to twenty thousand. And the following year, we were negotiating with them, mostly Joe Pedro. I couldn't judge, it didn't sound like it, it got me started.
Well, I.
Uh, wait, let me, the following year, we were giving everybody between five and six percent increase in salary, department heads, they're, they're sitting right there, they'll tell you. And Joe Pedro at that time lost twenty percent increase. And here's one of the states, I wish he was here tonight, that's why I came here. He said, when I left Millard Royce, I was making forty-seven thousand dollars a year. And I forgot what element it was, I think it was the Fifth Ward office at that time, Jim Madsen, and said, well, this isn't Millard Royce, this is the City of Fulton, and we came into our taxpayers' dollars. And now Joe Pedro went from, went from sixteen thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars in eight years. He's getting more right now than Jack Walker, thirty-three years ago. Thank you. You guys aren't paying yourself. If you got, if why did you got the money? Where did you get the money to pay these guys? Are you willing to give them duty budgets, are you willing to risk? If they're not, you could be giving them only ten thousand dollars.
We didn't give them ten thousand dollars for the year. Excuse me?
Five thousand a piece, that's why I wasn't paying for duty, that was your full service, they paid for payback.
It was at a yearly rate of five thousand a year, but it started about the next day after the resolution. So they didn't get a full five thousand, they would get maybe, what, fifteen hundred or something for the year. At. Excuse me?
Here, here's the date, there's, we're still at five thousand.
Right, but for this calendar, a fiscal year, it's only about fifteen hundred dollars.
Still thirteen percent, right? They're always making fifteen percent, and that's it.
And a yearly rate. Anything else, Lincoln?
I think I'll keep my watch, thank you.
Yes.
I mean, you granted sixteen percent pay rate, you're two individuals, and you're both, you're looking at binding arbitration on a police department and twenty months of benefits for the CSEA. And they're not asking anywhere near sixteen percent, nowhere near it. I don't see how you can even think about going binding arbitration, but your only compensation is that you got to pay, you just shot yourself in the foot on that one.
They don't have the responsibility that the clerk and the Chamberlain have. They're, those two were. Excuse me?
Police don't have any part to go for your safety or anything?
Yeah, for the safety, I'm talking about as the department has. That's why the police chief makes more than anybody else in the department, the fire chief makes, supposed to make more than anybody else in the department. Theoretically.
There's, there's other cases where he cuts down.
But just about, except for one or two firemen and policemen, everybody on the Fire Department and Police Department were making more than the clerk and Chamberlain. And that didn't, that didn't.
Longevity, I worked in, in government for a long time, okay? And you cannot compare job structures or job salaries from one to the other.
You wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, you just can't do that.
I, I wasn't trying to bring that up. I'm just trying to make a point, you grant sixteen percent pay raises for two individuals and argue over pennies, which is so absurd.
I don't, I don't think that, uh, it, it, the mon, the money's not the issue with them. No, first of all, maybe you should get some tax. I bet, yeah, but you should, you should get some tax on, on what the summing blocks are in, in the problems that we're having.
You're talking, what, ninety-eight orders compared to two?
Now, one, one of the things, the reasons that, that I voted for that, was that I thought that their, their pay was inequitable with other departments. So, that's why I brought them up to where I thought was a more equitable rate. Now, I, in next year's budget, you know, I know that we should give our department heads some, some raises, because they haven't had one in, in a couple of years. But for the two that we just did, you know, I don't think they should be included in that group, because I think we've made them equitable, and, uh, that's enough. And as far as the, the CSEA union, uh, you know, when we met with, with the CSEA union, uh, I had, I'd never been involved in negotiations before with, with the union. But it was always my understanding that you talk back and forth, and maybe it's due to inexperience on our part, but we really didn't talk. Both sides presented their case, and then the two people that we had in there, uh, the attorneys, their attorney and, and our attorney, said, well, this is an impasse. But that meeting, in my mind, it didn't take a half hour, and it was over. And I, there really was no interchange of ideas that I saw. So, you know, if, I don't, I wouldn't even call that negotiating, because they had their side, and we, we presented something on our side. And in my mind, when you negotiate, you come someplace in between. And we did none of that. So, uh, you know, I asked Bill to get together next week again to, to talk, and I hope that we, that we can talk.
Their contract, we sat down with new people, we talked with new people, set a negotiating, that's how we settled our contract. Why can't you give those guys the same respect and sit down and listen to them? Don't worry about negotiating.
I agree.
Is that, no, but. All for the union too, with their negotiators?
You, you have to understand something, Bill.
No, no, you didn't, I'm talking about the police and the CSEA. It might, it might be easier for just the council and just their representatives to sit down and talk to each other. We've negotiated on both sides out of.
Talk, talk to the president, they might be willing to do something like that.
You know, you have to understand something, when we, we just came on in January, uh, you say this contract's been going on for twenty months. Well, you know, we, we just got here, we're trying to learn what, what all is involved in contracts, from insurance standpoint, from, from a salary standpoint. You know, if we, if we rush into it, well, we could, we could make, we could make a mistake for, on behalf of the city. And, you know, we want to make sure that we have, we can do, uh, what we have funds to do. Now, you know, the ten thousand dollars compared to, uh, a increase in salary for the whole CSEA union or the whole policemen's union is a lot bigger dollars. I know, I understand that, but that's, you know, that's why, you know, we, we have to be careful, because it is a lot, lot more money. I understand what you're saying, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, you know, uh, when we did meet, uh, when, when we met with the policemen, to me, it was more like what a negotiating, uh, session should be. We talked back and forth. When we met with the CSEA, I don't think I said three words. And neither did people from the CSEA union, the two lawyers talked, and all of a sudden, uh, impasse, and away we went. And I, I kinda sat there for a few minutes, and I said, is this what you do in negotiations? And I, I wasn't very happy with the way either side really, really, uh, presented themselves in there. Yes, we do, we have a, we have a firm out of, out of Albany, and I know, Ross, everybody says you should get rid of that firm, but when you're coming on as a new council, and negotiations have been going on for ten or twelve months, and you don't know anything about them, you want somebody in there that has some knowledge as to what's going on. Well, but Mary Allison's not here anymore. So, you know, thi- this is what we're doing. You know, we can't go into negotiations cold, you have to go in there with somebody who at least has some experience as, as to what's been said in, in previous negotiations. I, I think after we, we do these, these two, and we gain some experience, some more experience over the next few years, that, you know, after this year, I wouldn't recommend hiring.
I think we have a right, in our contract with them, to terminate them from, what, thirty days?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, we can terminate them.
We pay them twenty thousand dollars a year.
Twenty thousand dollars, that's just going towards the union's, for the CSEA membership, a lot of money.
If you look at it in those terms, that's probably be about half their wage increase.
That's only natural for an individual who works for the city, they ask for a raise, it's normal, I would want it, you would want it. You know, it rewards them for the good work that they've done, but the problem here that, why I can't, I can't just be here, that we need to find more money. It's not, you know, a matter of cut that, cut more, and we cut that, we need to find more money, if, whether it's not state level, federal level, or wherever it's going to be. No one wants to raise taxes, and not for raising taxes, but tax them up, we need to find more money to, 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 to.
Hey, there's nothing, nothing I wouldn't like better than to be able to sit down with the policeman and the CSEA next week and, and resolve a contract. You know, it takes a lot of time to sit down and do this, week after week. You know, we sat down with insurance people, asking, you know, well, what if, what if we offer this from an insurance standpoint, what kind of money does this save, or what kind of money does this cost the city? Bill?
This week, John, you and I have had a couple of discussions, uh, I think I can honestly speak for your opinion also. Uh, John and I have already discussed the, the idea of sitting down, uh, a select few of the Aldermen who are on the committee, on your committee, a few of my committee people, without the negotiators, sit down, have a discussion, we expect to talk about it for this meeting, see if, uh, you know, what kind of agreement we can come to, et cetera. I don't, I don't expect you to fire your, your law firm, because I'm not going to eliminate mine. Because I need legal counsel just as much as you do. Now, I've been given the authority, and I've already told you on this, from my union official people that I have to answer to, that if we want to have an informal sit-down discussion, that's fine and dandy, as long as I relay the information that is discussed to my people for the legal advice, which is perfectly understandable, make sure that, you know, we, we're, we're not, you're not doing anything that you're not supposed to do, we're not doing anything we're not supposed to do. And I, I would expect you to do the same. But the thing of it is, is to shut down talk totally. Now, the package that the city proposed us, I don't think we need to go into it publicly, and the package that I proposed to the city, uh, we were, we're miles apart. And that's as far as it went, nobody wanted to talk. At the time, you had your negotiator, I had mine, our negotiators, that don't say a word, that's it.
Our negotiators, that don't say a word, that's it. I have to go by what my people say, you have to go by what yours say. That's what we hired these people for. But the thing of it is, now we sent, it's June fifteenth was our last meeting. Now you tell, you're telling everyone here, well, you walked into the situation because you're a new council. I'm a new president. I've only been in office four months. I got handed the headaches also. But at least I'm willing and I'm trying to make some resolve of it. I can't get anything out of you both. You know, I've been told by certain aldermen, hey, when can we sit down and talk? I tell you, if you give me a date, we'll be there. Okay, we'll call you next week. I never hear it next week. I can't move unless you people move. Takes two. I'm ready to go back to the table. I've been ready. I got eighty seven people chewing on my butt. I want a contract too. I got a family support. I pay taxes now too. The cost of living's going up, but our salaries aren't. We've been at worth nineteen, uh, our last contract was nineteen eighty nine. We extended that contract for one year, nineteen ninety. Now we're still two years behind the game here. And statistically, John spoke of re, uh, structuring the, uh, the city employees going through and, uh, I'm not sure exactly how you put it, it's in the hallway, I just thought bits and pieces of it. But I'm curious to find out what you're done, what you mean by structuring.
Well, what we do in the county, okay, they're starting salary ranges, people coming in. Um, like there might be one for, uh, the real property tax offices, okay? There's another one for the, uh, county clerk or the, the treasurer. Or, uh, you know, the highway superintendent. Well, no, no, no. They, they do it, they do it below that too, where they have different classes. Where they start you at a certain rate depending upon experience and different things like that. And I think that's something that we have to do here, okay? And, and keep it with, well, municipalities or any type of governmental type of employee.
We got a minute to prove, a survey that was done last year, the end of last year, first part of this year was concluded from C S D A. Uh, in the tri-county area, that is Anadaga County, Oswego County, I take it back, it's the four county areas. Keoga County and the Jefferson Lewis area, city of Fulton, civil service employees are at the bottom of the scale when it comes to pay. The starting rates are the lowest. You have municipalities that are a hell of a lot smaller than the city of Fulton. And their starting rate right now for their laborers are more than our qualified truck drivers. You know, that's disgusting. Driver's licenses are going up every year. Our class three driver's licenses for our drivers are sixty three dollars every time you redo it. Some of the class one licenses are more. We're the ones that have to eat those expenses. So we do it because of our job, but we're not making the money for it. We could be working for, well, years ago, I can't say you could be doing it now because of the situation. But, uh, you can go as a professional truck driver and make three times the amount of money the city of Fulton pays. All we're asking for is to go back, sit down and talk. You wanna pour a cup of coffee and, and talk, that's fine. I got no problem with that. So let's talk.
John, do you think you can survive a meeting with the union without their attorneys? And if you don't, because it can be intimidating since the membership attorneys come and you're there and, uh, you know, you're having attorneys speak legal leaves to certain members of the council. It can be an intimidating thing. And it's possible to meet with the membership, certain members who doesn't get out of hand without the attorney's presence, maybe not anymore.
That's what I suggest to Bill, that we do that.
John, are you chairman of the alderman committee? Why don't you get together with Bill after the meeting and put together a date? Okay? Anything from the department heads? Bucky? Mike? Steve? Great. Motion to adjourn, executive session.
Well, I'd like to say one other thing. Uh, under executive session, uh, we're gonna be talking about, uh, uh, the police department too. Uh, that wasn't known as on the, uh, agenda, but we're gonna be talking about the police department too.
True.
The gas treatment.
Do the benefits. Motion to adjourn, main executive session. I'll move it. Second. Second. Sixth one? Yeah. First one? Second one? Yes. Third one? Fourth one? Yes, nice and clear.